We call the meeting of the West Mullen County Council.
Okay, she's saying.
The council members together is November the 19th of 2020 and at 7:00 PM. Councilman Bendel, I think you're going to do your demotion, is that right?
Yes, sir.
That's right.
Father in heaven, we recognize you as the one that cares for us, loves us so much. Provided Jesus Christ to be the sacrifice for our sins. We're so thankful for that. We pray, Father, that you would bless America. I don't have to tell you, we're in a mess. So we pray that cooler heads may prevail and the right thing will be done and you can be in the midst of all of it. Bless each one that has come here tonight. Bless their homes. Bless our business that we've carried out in the way that will be good for the city. And Father, so many people are getting cold enough. We pray God that you be with them, let them get the right proper care. And we pray this thing will come to a close before long. So bless our city, bless everybody here tonight, and God bless America. Our last prayer.
Amen.
To please stand before the place to apply.
Our blessed citizens, good to find you on the United States of America. And to govern lightly, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Trump, you've called the parole please.
County Bendel.
Present.
Doug Brown.
Here.
Rudy Carter.
Here.
Jerry Kirkman.
Here.
David Lee.
Here.
Senator Wilkerson.
Here.
We're parole called. All council members of prison, and we have forums, so we can proceed with the meeting as scheduled. The first item is to adopt the agenda.
I believe we adopt the agenda.
Have a motion by Councilman Bendel, accepted by Councilman Brown, to adopt the agenda as written.
I need to make a amendment to the paper, please.
Okay, so we're asking for an amendment? Go ahead, Councilman Leach.
Add to it 37186 miles, event permit.
Is that all you have?
That's all I've got.
Yeah, I want to add one other thing. I want to add the county building code services have a little discussion on that at the end too. I sent you all an email, I think yesterday or today, a little background on it.
Okay, for the purposes of amending the agenda, do I have a motion?
Yes.
Okay, now you have a second on being amended.
Do you make the motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'll do it.
Okay, Councilman Leach has a second. So this is the vote to amend the agenda. It takes four votes to do that, so Ms. Tisha, you'll call parole.
Wilkerson, yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Okay, the amendment for the additions have been added, it passes. So now back to the normal agenda with the additions of 37186 miles and building code services.
Is the motion called for already?
Uh, we're accountable for discussion at this point. Ms. Tisha, you'll call parole.
Brown.
Yes.
Carter, yes.
Bendel.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Motion carries on, so we have an agenda to work with. Next item is public comments. I understand we have two or three votes that need to be spayed.
Who do I see the person name?
The two S.
Kiana Moss.
What person name?
Does someone have stopwatch? How long did you get?
Um, 30 minutes. I raised my hand when it's up.
Okay, appreciate it. If you come forward, please, to the microphone, state your name.
Kiana Moss.
Okay, we're going to give you three minutes to state what you come to talk about that's on the agenda tonight from the council.
Okay. My only concern with one of the items on there is the hiring backup Amanda Wolf. Over the summer, she was inside the Dollar General talking with a young man. I had no idea who the man was. And I overheard the conversation and then coming down the aisle. And she says, if I can get his address, can you go finish what I started or what I done? That was a pretty good gap in time from when it happened to when that conversation with that individual occurred. My concern is her heartbrings ill will and bad feelings towards that man.
Thank you for coming tonight.
I first want to say thank you for listening to me tonight and giving me this opportunity. I first want to want to say, when I speak about Amanda Wolf tonight, there's no ill will toward that man. I've even told her that it's not personal, it isn't. And she said she understood that. So first of all, I want to talk about our local paper. It addressed several things about Amanda last week that was kind of concerning to me that I did not know. So when I read a part of it from our local paper from West Mullen, one part of it says that Wolf is headed to court at the end of November to ask for her charges to be expunged. My question to the council is tonight, how are you going to vote to allow her to go back into the police department when her record has not been expunged yet? That was part of her plea deal. So I didn't know that. I thought that was already taken care of. On down in the paper, it said, Jolly said, I feel like that if the city does not allow her to come back as a law enforcement, her career is probably over. My question is, does the city of West Mullen have the funds if something else did happen? I don't think we have the money to back her up if something else happened and we had to go to court or she had to go to court. That's my concern there. And not only mine, let me say this, many citizens have reached out to me by email, text messages, phone calls. And I had to let them know, there's nothing, I have nothing to say about this, except I can voice their opinion or how they feel because I'm not on the council yet. They were thinking that I was already going to be the one voting on this, then I had to let them know, I'm not sworn in until December the 1st. So if our chief or anyone else feels the way that if we don't give her her job as a police officer, her career is over, my question is, why are we taking the chance? Why can't Ms. Amanda go to Macon County, Portland, Galveston, and try to pursue her career there? Why does West Mullen have to be the one? I feel like West Mullen has stuck their neck out and made a position for Ms. Amanda as animal control codes. That's the way I feel about that. The other thing, if Ms. Amanda does not go back as a police officer, I feel like she needs to fill all of her job titles as codes. Her one job title in codes was to work at City Hall. She doesn't work at City Hall. The other one was, you know, I don't think it was put in there about her getting her degree or requirement certificates to be able to be codes. But if we're going to continue to pay somebody to do codes, they need to be educated on it. We don't need to continue to go to Galveston for help on that. Okay, now money. I see that we're giving out raises. Our budget is tight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tisha. Next is Mrs. Carolyn Moss.
We'll carry it up. Sorry, there.
Okay, you have 30 minutes to let the council know what you have on your mind about what's on the agenda tonight.
I'm a little concerned about y'all hiring Amanda Wolf back. A lot of y'all know the history that I've had here with the police department, and I have given the benefit of the doubt, but, you know, and people do make mistakes, and I do understand that. But she is a liability. And when stuff happened to my family back when Kate was 15 years old, this town never embraced us. They fired or he resigned, we didn't get fired. I had to press the issue. Y'all, I really think you're making a serious mistake if you hire her back because she walks around town, she drives around town, she says she's everything, and I just, I just, and I support the police department, I will support anything, but I have not come to any of these council meetings because I can watch them online. And when people come up here and speak, 90% of the time, y'all don't listen. But I'm here to speak and tell y'all, I think you're making a terrible mistake hiring her back. And that's all I have to say about it. Any questions?
Thank you for coming. That concludes the names on our list for public comments. The next item is the minutes from the October 15, 2020 meeting.
I make a motion to pass the October 15, 2020 minutes as written.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Carter, a second by Councilwoman Wilkerson to accept the minutes of the October 15, 2020 meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. The next item is the minutes from the November 5, 2020 special call meeting.
I believe we have the minutes from November 5.
Have a motion by Councilman Bendel, a second by Councilman Leach to accept the minutes as written. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let for record reflect that the motion carries unanimously for the November 5, 2020 meeting. Next item on the agenda is the October 2020 financial statement.
I make a motion to set the October 2020 financial statement.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Leach, a second by Councilman Brown to accept the October 2020 financial statement. We are open for discussion.
Tisha, did you ever find out what happened to the gasoline tax under state's treaty? Why it wasn't recorded as a revenue?
The check was cut out on October the 30th, and so it doesn't just get posted into the computer until the following week, which would manage to end November.
How much was it, do you know?
Um, I do not remember. But I mean, it was close to what we normally get on that. So I can get that number to you in the morning if you'd like it.
That's okay. Within the $6,000 range?
Yes, it was in the $6,000 range.
So our total revenue would be higher making our end balance not negative.
Right, yes, ma'am. It would be about $4,000 in the positive.
That's why it's critical to get it in the proper amount.
Other items?
Under water in the sewer, I noticed that our, the sewer pumps that we replaced, not the big force main pump that we paid about $35,000 for, all of those other vacuum pumps that went out and we lost several of them, just bam, 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 all got taken out of the pump line and stepped out and we repaired the line for the collection system. So that is why that pump line is open, we haven't spent that much on. That line was placed in for the big force main pump that we buy. So that's just a little oversight, it's not a big deal because it's all coming out of that same pump, but the solid point that out.
He wants to raise that, should it bring?
It would probably be good, but you know, if that's something that you don't get around to, that's not a big important issue in the scheme of things.
And also underwater on 262, under maintenance repair lines, the $42,000 there is actually for the pumping station road project, and it was in last year's budget, but we never, we didn't get it all completed before then, so it didn't get moved forward to this year's budget. So that's, you know, part of the budget amendment is to bring that money forward and move that to the proper line item.
So you reduce that repair maintenance line when you get the amendment in for them?
Yes.
Mayor, was you talking about line 947 under sewer?
That $11,000, is what you were talking about?
Yes.
Okay. Down right underneath that, the line of 988, the CPDG grant match that we didn't get, was that money designated for anything that could have been?
It was not designated, but it needs to go back into reserve to help with your depreciation costs. But it is very, and one thing that gives us a little bit of cushion if we lose many more of those pumps, of course, hopefully Aaron has found out the problem as to why we're losing those and that's been corrected, so.
That's what I was thinking about, the pumps, because they all have to get out.
Okay, and where did you say to make that 947, Drew?
Just to reserve for depreciation.
Oh, that's for my 88. So for the pump?
Just repaired for the.
The plant or not?
No, it's actually the collection system. Yeah, all those pumps are part of our collection.
That would be for lines or the plant?
It'd be for lines.
Yeah.
It's not plant.
265.
Any other? When you're ready, Mr. Scott, you'll call it.
Wilkerson, yes. Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Bendel?
Yes.
Let for record show that the motion carries unanimously. We move now into old business. The first item booked is second reading of ordinance 09-2020-1, the city code amendment that Councilman Bendel brought back, and it was pretty much our junk car one, that's correct?
Correct. Now, we will pass the ordinance on down 2020-1. Mr. Brandy has been over it, actually retired it, and it should be, should be good to go.
We have a motion by Councilman Bendel, a second by Councilman Leach to accept and pass on second reading ordinance 09-2020-1, the city code amendment for junk car ordinance. We're open for any discussion on it. When will this be taking effect, Councilman?
Well, that's on section 5, so we can, we can add that. The ordinance should become effective at the earliest date allowed by law.
That being?
So I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know what. If you want to put a date in there of like 1/1/21, that would be fine with me. And even that, they don't have time to work with a codes person to get some news, it's not drop dead by then.
So 1/1/21?
Well, that's just, I put that on the table. I like to get it rather simply, if you want to push it back a little bit if you can, are you okay with that?
Councilmembers?
What's the dates that the system has to remove the nickel? What was the full duty timeline?
10 days. Actually, I believe it is 10 days for them to ask for a hearing, or 10 additional days once per hearing. I'm not sure if that's a hearing before the council or a hearing before the judge. Mr. Bendel, could you refresh yourself?
Well, when you start trying to find this stuff quickly, it escapes me.
That's the reason I was hoping you know exactly where it was. Reason I'm asking, we've got one over in the age of Wagner's, Wagner's way that I'm ready to go work on tomorrow.
Under 13-304 enforcement, does that take care of it? Police officer who witnesses the violation may issue a dangerous citation. The city municipal courts may issue orders to remove vehicles from private property.
I'm not sure of the court.
Do you know if they have the authority to even do that or no?
It's more of a civil matter, so I'm not sure that they do.
Also, I want to point out that it says the building inspector shall upon such complaint with any citizen, that having it's great.
Where's that, Senator?
In 13-304, at the third line down.
Yeah, I think that needs to be changed to officer of the city.
Well, the first sentence reads, the codes employee is authorized to issue ordinance summons for violation of this ordinance on private property. What that says to me is that an ordinance summons has to be issued to the property
I don't think like this police officer. Anyone can issue a summons to go forward, but some of those matters just can't, an officer can't make a physical custodial arrest on a civil matter. Right, right.
So you're saying in the second sentence that obviously a police officer has to do the building inspector, is what you're saying?
Yeah, honestly, I think this is totally out of the building, it's very problematic.
We discussed that, was that a discussion on this that you were talking about the difference?
I think that's maybe it's on outside of it.
It's for me. He's got one he wants to do.
Well, he needs to.
I'm okay with that.
He's been there for a year and a half.
Yeah, he needs to go.
Where's it at?
At the Wagner Way.
Oh, yeah. Remember? Around.
Mm-hmm. I bet the city's got 150 cars on that car the last year and a half.
If we change that to police officer, investigate complaints of junk cars on private property. If after such investigation, the codes employee finds a junk car vehicle on private property, he shall issue an ordinance summons.
We're about the 9/4 between codes employee and police officer.
Where are you reading that?
I'm still under 304.
She's just continuing reading all day, and then it comes back to codes employee. It all needs to be the same.
It says police officer who witnessed.
Yeah, then it comes back to police officer, it comes back to 4.
Could the codes employee bring it to the police officer's attention and let him take it?
The codes employee can actually write any kind, can do the investigation, can write the summons to court or any of that, but some kind of police officer. That would be more how you all would further be handled.
Right now, I'm kind of going on the consensus that we may not have a codes employee, so.
I think it could change to police officer.
I think change your plan to police officer.
Because if you eventually have a full-time codes person, the chances are they're going to be, at least be under the police department umbrella if they're not a full-fledged certified officer to serve. So here we're in, just where it says building inspector or code, we're going to amend it to say a police officer.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the effect will be as soon as it's signed.
Do we, it doesn't mention the timeline given to the owner of the junk car. What it says is after such investigation, police officer finds a junk vehicle on private property, he shall issue an ordinance summons, and then that ordinance summons shall be served upon the owner or owners of the property, or upon the person or persons defending the law position of the property, shall give notice to the same appear and answer the charges against him or her. I wonder if, would it, wouldn't it be better to have a timeline in there to have a warning prior to issuing an ordinance for an individual to remove the said vehicle?
I agree. 10-day notice by registered mail would be a good first attempt with things. And let me throw this out, what prompts that? In my utility commission classes yesterday, legislature has now passed that like on our water bills, it gets the date on it that water service will terminate if the bill has not been paid. That is no longer useful. Starting now, you have to give, I think it's an actual five-day mail notice before you can shut the water off. So that is something that we're going to have to start, has to put it in our new policy, and we're going to have to get letters printed and be ready.
And we're going to have to get letters printed and be ready to mail those. So it says five days, so this one, it used to say 20 days, and it got reduced to 10. Under Section 1, there it says changing the number from 20 with the number to 10. So I think a 10-day written notice to the property owner that summons or citation is going to be issued would be a good thing.
Could that be certified mail, is that what you're saying?
It would be best to be certified, that way you know who received it. And, you know, a lot of folks used to wouldn't receive certified mail because they thought it was important something. And I don't know how my judges used to handle that in criminal court, because that's how they sounded jury duty, was by certified mail.
So it's going to tack that on at the end of the enforcement?
Actually, I think it needs to be more at the beginning of it.
That's the word, probably, written?
Yes, probably does.
What does that time period speak to in Section 1?
Of course, please.
Yeah, the certain time period, it says with the number, so I know we're changing from 20 to 10 regarding a certain time period.
No, I don't think 10 is enough now as to the time speakers can change that.
Well, that's referring to Section 101-10.
Correct.
So that also does that apply to...
Oh, okay.
We don't have one on 101-10, and this part... Right, it just mentions that it's not that simple.
That was the one that was requested be added in by this one. I guess we could put that in under the penalty for violations, that before a penalty for violation could be issued, a 10-day written notice served by certified mail to the property owner. I guess we're going for the property owner here and not our owner, correct? In this situation, it's Wagner's way, one of the residents out there just pulled it out there and dumped it off on his neighbor.
Yeah, for the property owner.
There was some of the lead, or they got any of the lead out of it.
Yeah, I think that's the place to put it, under one play out there, that similar wording you said.
Has John, has he sent this to you, or is it all on his computer?
I think this one I have.
We can get together that all of that in. I think that's the best place to put it.
Under Section, we thought still in 13...
13...
304?
No, 13-112, before any service can be issued a violation, a 10-day written notice, sent a certified mail to the property owner.
13-112. So you need a motion to amend this?
Uh, no, we don't. We're on second reading, so we can make any changes if we want to. And we're changing all votes from building inspector to police officer.
And effective when it's signed? Next page.
Okay, any other discussion?
On 13-304, if we change, if we're adding the 10-day written notice warning, I think it needs to be also added after the, after the second paragraph, or not, I'm sorry, the one... To the second, third sentence in where it says, "If after such investigation, finds a police officer finds a junk vehicle on private property, a 10-day written notice, that's where that should also go in, because it conflicts with itself if we don't add that verbiage there.
Good case. Good case.
And it says he shall issue an ordinance summons, but we're just giving, we just said we're going to give them a 10-day notice. So then it could go on to say, after such 10 days, after 10 days, and this, I think this needs to be business days. After 10 business days, the, if the property owner has not resolved the issue of the junk vehicle, then an ordinance summons shall be served upon the owner or owners of the property, or upon the person or persons apparently in lawful possession of the property.
Well, then it's something to be added to the next section, penalty for violations, because that's what 112 was, and that's what replaces for...
So did you change?
Um, we had done 13-112 on very first page, penalty for violations. We had added that sentence there too.
Right.
So that, well, right below 304 is 305, which is penalty for violation. Referring back to, I'm assuming, 304. Which means they will have, any person violating the statute shall be subject to a civil penalty of $50 plus court costs for separate violation of the law.
So the two previous sentences, we've covered that, Chandler.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're...
I think the violation will occur after said 10-day business day. And that's my interpretation of that.
Okay, is there, does anyone have an ordinance that has all the complete verbiage for 13-109 and 13-110 from that first page? Where it says a municipal code is needed and changed. We may not even have to put that... Well, I guess we're going to put this other under 13-112, so 109 and 110 will still stand as it is, correct?
I believe so.
And after their first appearance in court, then the officer can go back and cite each day after that, and it will be a separate violation, but we're not going to continue to give the 10-day notice after that. It will just mount up. So how do we save that in here to make it usable? I think that might be something we have to get Mr. Bradley back involved with, to make sure we get the correct verbiage in.
So you think Section 3 is not clear enough? 13-105.
I think it's clear, but we know what we're talking about. If somebody picks this ordinance up, and they stop in the City Hall next week and pick it up and want to make sure we're following the rules, or are we making it plain that, you know, because we've just said we're going to give them a 10-day written notice, but if they don't get it after the first time, I want to make sure that they don't, no, we're going to give them 50 written notices when we're citing them for the next 50 times in court. Does that make sense? I guess we can try this and see if we get any kickback on it. We see what happens and then we're worried. But we can check with, we can check with the attorney and see if there's anything that he wants to do additionally with it now that we made this change. Any other discussion? So one more call for question?
Question.
Ms. Gish, you'll call for vote?
For all, please.
Carter?
Yes.
Lookerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Let's replace the second reading of ordinance, 092020-1. It is now in history books. It has passed unanimously. The next item, and hopefully this one can go just as easy, is a fourth second reading of ordinance, 010, 2020-1, solid waste ordinance. Uh, here, we have, we've gotten a new copy every day, for past 23 days. And John brought us a new copy tonight, so do we want to vote on this tonight? Or does that all need to be compiled, and just know for sure what we have? Here is a lot of blanks to be filled in if we go with one copy. So I'll wait and see if we get a motion, see how the motion goes and what happens.
Yeah, I believe we passed ordinance 01, 0102020-1.
We have a motion by Councilman Bell, do we have a second?
I'll see.
Councilman Lee provides the second. This is second reading of ordinance, 010, 2020-1, these solid waste ordinance that we have. Take it away.
Okay, Mr. Bradley, I mean, he's a gorilla warfare tonight, and he hit and run. One of the versions had a transition plan Aaron had in there. It was on the first page, and that's where we want to fill in some numbers. He said that transition plan should be put at the end of this, right after 17 days to the back.
On his copy?
Right. So I guess we need to talk through that transition plan, Eric. If we want to, you want to kind of help us walk through that, fill in the blanks?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if y'all have a copy of that or not. Do you have the transition plan from one of the, y'all have that?
That was in your packet.
It's in your packet?
That part was, yes. And then this is what Mr. Bradley brought tonight. You have to talk about it.
I think he said, only thing he changed was, which she's already changed it, where it was talking about the offense. Mr. Me here bears his offense, right?
This means his offense, yeah.
I think that was the only thing he had changed in this.
Yeah, there's 17 days, seven.
Okay, let's just read through it and get some dates to go in. Everything in this ordinance will be effective January 1, 2021, except the 96-gallon trash can requirement, and the trash can pins would need to be removed from the property owner by December 31, 2020. Are we okay so far? The trash cans will be phased in, with everyone expected to have a can by. What's your first date to put in the class?
Well, I was thinking, like, January 1 of '22 is what I was thinking. That would give us time, we'll have no budget by then, then that would give time for cans to be purchased. So, and not do it all at once. That was my opinion, but I'm open to suggestions.
This is your ordinance, however, it's your way, just like Burger King. So the trash cans will be phased in, and everyone will be expected to have a can by January 1, 2022. You can repurchase a can at City Hall at a cost of, and the prevailing rate right now is 60 bucks, but it's probably going to change between now and then.
I think we just need to put in there at the prevailing rates.
Prevailing rate.
Pretty good.
Pay over to the City Hall, or the cost can be added to your water bill over how many months?
I got a question. Is that going to be an issue, or something about the software would have to be amended? Or do we need to get into that, or they just need to come to City Hall and pay over for months? I don't know the answer.
We haven't got our new software yet, so I don't know if it would have that capability or not.
And otherwise, if it doesn't, you'll have to manually keep up with it.
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
Which I'm sure we can do a spreadsheet for that. Well, yeah.
Eight hundred names on the spreadsheet, or eight hundred addresses?
It would be nice if it was, if you could add it to.
Right, and it may be able to.
Yeah. That would be ideal.
So how many months do we want to allow these folks, because you know you have a lot of elderly with moderate income, that even $10 a month is going to be an outrageous amount for them, so...
With the prevailing rate, how much would it possibly fluctuate from 60 to any year's time?
Right now, what I got today was 65. So it just depends on the economy and how everything's going, probably, and oil prices and everything else. Well, because I would say it's a controlling basis, probably, just guessing.
If you divide that up by 12 months, it's $5.42. That would tack on to everybody's deal.
The ones that warned it that time.
Yeah, the ones that...
Yeah, those who ought to have it added to the water bill over X hundred months. And 12 is a very low cost, but...
By dollars, by dollars.
You give them a big letter, you give them here.
Yes.
Like they said.
Well, what could happen if we do give somebody, I mean, I'm just a whole question out there. Give them 12 months to play board, and they, so happens that they bump and move and file.
Well, it's those you don't get.
And take the can with them.
Well, if they don't get the cans, well, it's paid right there.
Right.
They don't get the cans, it's paid right there.
So you may be doing a mass delivery, all these are pretty birds just 20, 21.
Big like Christmas.
I think 12 months is reasonable, now, I mean, I'll admit, $5 makes people happy. They're like, you know, they're still traveling, but I believe 12 months is a long...
Want to put like four months unless other arrangements arrive?
Or does it, you want to be confused in front?
I mean, that would be probably more harder on them, as that'd be a question for her, because it'd be great for me, because, you know, I think, you know, that'd be a good thing, but...
Well, you're looking forward to receipt.
Right, exactly, that's what I'm saying, so it's, you know, it's, they're the ones going to have to deal with that harder.
They'd be getting their garbage out of the situation hanging quicker than getting their can at four months, or 12 months.
Well, too, the ones that just pays for it upfront, people have issued their can then, they can start using it, right? But people, some people by the now, didn't use it, right? Okay, so it wouldn't be all deliberate at the front. Unless everybody chose to spread out the payment.
What about four months or 12 months?
It's what's going to be, I like the mayor's idea. Yeah, you could, you know, if we did, do the four months or set up a different plan, but I don't know. don't know how to do it right now. That's the idea, I would hope, if it was me.
But if you don't do four months, that next sentence in parentheses is going to have to, because it pays for it.
That was just the first.
Okay, okay. That'll happen, okay.
I mean, I think the four months, unless, you know, if they need longer, we can work something out.
We can order the cans in lots of one hundred, so we wait to get one hundred orders and then order them. Once the entire amount is paid, a can can be delivered to the residence upon all, until all residents have the ninety-six gallon can, residents will be allowed no more than five bags of trash per week.
Say, does that?
You need to add that in. More bags than this will be left, is that how you want to handle it? Because the purpose of picking up the trash is so you don't have an unsanitary area. If you're going to drive off and leave it laying there, then what's going to be the consequences? Let's talk about that.
Can an extra charge be added to them if you pick up more trash that are left?
Um, what do you want to do? Six to ten bags would be an extra charge?
I think, yeah, that'd be something we can do.
Now, if that means they're going to have to get out, it's for the residents that it's for the side, they're going to have to note somewhere, remember all of that, so.
But City's not doing its job if it drives off or leaves it laying there either, so.
Can we, can we back up there? Until, until all residents have the ninety-six gallon can, residents will be allowed no more than five bags of trash. What does that say? It's saying that he'll, all residents have the ninety-six gallon can.
Between now and December 1, 2022.
And it also says in here.
So once all residents have ninety-six gallon cans, we can have more than five bags of trash?
It has to all fit in that can. It literally says, has to fit in that can.
A lead plus.
Yeah, you can, you can have.
A can in it and put you.
Whatever you do, isn't it?
Five bags or up to two cans.
Right now, what we're trying to put a stop to is the fact that somebody puts out twenty bags of trash, and, you know, if that's all coming from one household, it's odd, I mean, it's like I was telling Aaron, we generate about one bag a week. I have neighbors that have eight or ten bags out. More, did you have more, you generate from order that you order from Amazon, the more you generate. So what we're trying is, we've talked about this for several years now, and like Aaron says, you pull up to one house, you've got two or three bags, and then you've got twenty, and then the next one's probably got twenty or twenty-five, and all the bags are different colors, so you're not even sure, you know, chances are, there's not that many residents that are using three different styles of bags. Most of my bags are all the same. I do have a long bag that I use about once every three months, that I'll throw tweaks and stuff in and put it in. But on the average, I'd say most people's bags, and what they're thinking is, we have a lot of people that are coming in, that are dropping their trash off and driving right on out of town, but just leaving it there to be picked up. So hopefully, the budget's going to stop some of it, but at the price that we pick up a trash four in this city, five bags is probably a very good limit. If you want to increase it to six, then six is still not bad. If you stop somewhere and you've got twenty-five bags laying there, six is a piece of cake.
And lose stuff on top of those bags also.
Never know what you're going to get.
Yeah. I guess my thing is, you know, the five bags or two cans, you can have two cans or five bags, and the reason why I did that is to hopefully encourage people to go ahead and get a can, but like Jerry said, you know, if, if, you know, this is really not going to stop anybody from having twenty bags, we're just saying that, you know, you can only have five bags, but if you still get twenty bags, and I still got to pick it up, you know, there needs to be some kind of consequence, I guess, which, you know, it does state in here that you can be cited or whatever later on, that if you're not, I guess, by law, or whatever. But, you know, I guess I need to know is if, if we pull up this document, it's got twenty bags, and I still going to have to pick it up, you know, I see the point of, you know, you don't believe it, that's kind of the whole point of doing this, is to not have trash at work.
What would be, how do you feel about if we had some sticky notes written that were like in a pad? Be nice if it was in carbon dated, so you would have a copy, and you could leave a copy at the residence. My problem, just speaking personally, if you've got two or three houses in the road that all pull them out there together, you don't really know which house or residence that might have generated the extra. But I'm thinking if you had like a note blacked or something that had a sticky on it, you could tell it off, stick it to the door, or stick it to the trash can, that would say, we have picked up sixteen bags this week, our limit is five or six or whatever, and say if this continues, it will be added to your bill.
Okay, yeah. Sounds like.
I mean, I think a whole lot, it wouldn't, it won't take a whole lot if people were going to, nothing worse would pass this soon as it hits the front page of the paper, and we're going to be getting a lot of calls about it. Council members probably going to be getting a lot of calls, so you might as well be ready for it, they're going to come. So, but, and people usually pretty quiet until you hit their pocketbooks, and if you're going to hit their pocketbook, and in next year's sanitation budget, we're going to have to probably hit it and strengthen our fund, because our enterprise fund is getting lower than that, so we need to build it up just a little bit also, so. We're going to be getting some people's attention during the next ever how many months that we put this in, but this has been several years coming, it shouldn't have been done a long time ago, and I commend you, Aaron, for your work on it.
I think the door hangers is a good idea.
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
Because we already have some for the water, and we could probably just write on the back of it right now or something, and even I've got a box I can check on there that says other, and we can fill that out, but that's a good idea.
We've got to set some kind of filter out there for how we do with trash, just this week, right, you already told me, you don't, you don't put your trees in there, you're likely going to fight all charges for a tree, so I'll talk to the ribbon ramp to come down. We've got to have some kind of quality.
So is the public going to be, is there a certain way you're going to inform the public that this is coming, and the requirements now, the five bags or six bags?
Yeah, I mean, I guess through the paper, Facebook.
I think it's going to have to be each individual house, if it's mailing a letter or in the doors, cangers, or, I mean, mailing the letter is going to be very expensive.
Is there something like we could do, fax to the water bill or something? I don't know. I know there's a lot, but.
I don't think you can on that little card, because we should have a special rate, and I'm afraid if you cameras with that, our rate went up.
I mean, if we had to, I guess we could do a lot, or, you know, we could go around any house. I mean, it's still, in the long run, it's going to save time and money.
The only thing you could do is, when you mail, that's a bit difficult, too, put the card, the month that you're going to mail it out, put the card in the envelope and with the letter in the same envelope. That way you would be paying postage and the water bill, and then a postage to mail out what's coming in the letter.
Okay, but we would have to separate, because not everybody gets part of it.
Right.
And the bills are printed in.
Yeah, the draft, yes, the draft, the draft. That'd go forward.
I mean, we could do something quick to make it mail out, or we could go around and do, you know, I'm going to go and hand out flyers.
I don't think it'd be a problem getting word out, we can put it in the newspaper, you have postage and mailing in your budget, we can reduce some of that with, depending on when we send it out, but I think some of the door hangers that you were talking about, and I would actually get a lot of this, say sanitation department on it, so that people don't get confused, if you use water, they're going to, they're going to drive nuts, so. But I think getting that out is probably one of the least of our worries, and as we start to talk about it, it's going to generate more talk, so. So, other things in the ordinance that need to be changed.
Page three, under the following, you will see some, which would be placed with all the waste, like by the sea. Number five, human and animal excrement. I give the human part, animal excrement, cat litter.
Yeah.
So, like, I almost think that probably needs to be struck three and not put, that's my thing, because, I mean, if you pick up your dog, excrement, you're bagging it, and where else are you going to put it?
Right.
And if you, kitty litter, like, they're, they're having a choice there, really.
Right.
I guess they could strike five totally.
Well, no, you need the human excrement part. But I think you might, well, huh? You have diapers left, how do you? I don't know, I get a point of that. How can we, I got an idea for it.
I mean, I think you could just strike it totally, because if you get these hands, they can be flipped.
We should be okay then.
My big thing when I put that in there was, we have some customers that dump their stuff, they'll put the bags in the cans, and then they'll just dump the kitty litter on top of it. And I ain't sure that there's not a few of them that is not, they're not the cats or no.
I understand that.
That's covered up the number eight.
So we'll pick that transition plan, maybe come up with a violation penalty, but we'd just, that would always be added. If you look at seventeen dash twelve B, I think, I think Aaron had mentioned somewhere in our discussions, up to seven bags of leaves that may be placed in plastic bags at the curb side of the collection. Is that what you agreed to?
Yeah, seven or eight, eight or one.
You did have the seeds in there.
Where the seeds?
Yeah.
That's him, one person did.
That's a typo, Shannon had a typo.
Hey, I'll vote, I'll vote on that.
What do you want there? You tell us, the leaves aren't hidden.
What page is that on?
Seventeen, twelve.
I think, I think eight bags is, just add that?
And one of them that I looked at, because I was, I really was looking for it, and it states six.
Yes, it says.
It says, it says. It wasn't in that one part right there. There it is, on page nine, at the end of seventeen fifteen, it says, leaves shall be collected in a maximum of six bags per week.
Yeah.
And I think it's also on page eight, under seventeen dash twelve B.
Yeah, that's where I was talking. So what's that number need to be, six?
Well, one place it said six, so if we put eight, one place, we need to make six vote.
Six.
Six is fine.
Okay.
I'd like the bags that you put away, like, down there also.
Yeah, my guys did, too. That was one of their biggest questions. They said, so when will the weight went to go into the bag?
So you happy with what we got here? As far as you know?
As far as I can tell, yeah.
Well, it's a big document.
Sure did.
You've done a good job putting it together. Very good question.
How, I was going to ask, how are you going to make sure that folks get the notice right down to the cardboard, because Amazon's getting ready to expand, and they're going to get bigger and bigger, which means more and more to you.
I mean, I'm hoping that when, with the cans, you know, with the, with this being the can limit, and lid being closed, I'm hoping that they'll, which I, you know, there again, you can't take the, and make sure that everybody, think that everybody has consequences, but I guess maybe in the mail out or something that we do, we could put in there that, maybe start breaking your cardboard down, place inside of the box of or inside of the can, to make, to make sure that it does fit in there with the lid closed.
Tony, in speaking to what your question was about, what we're going to do after the bag, five bag limit, we can put a amount in there, or we can leave them a notice such, but if we don't look, if you're going to continue to do mission, do two cans, and get all the can in the two cans, and it's the same price, otherwise, we're going to have to basically double your, W rate. So we're a big good place for that, I think.
Well, it needs to be in that section where it states five bags.
So it's a little added in there, and it's to say that more bags will be left, so.
Yeah.
If you continue to violate, you'll be charged for two purposes.
I'm good with that change?
Does everybody have one where seventeen dash three is, does it make sure that we all have the same number looking at? Seventeen dash three is really short, it doesn't have the A and B, or seventeen dash thirteen, I'm sorry. It's just one single letter F, it doesn't have A, B, C, D.
It should say, very, very bottom should say eleven eighteen twenty twenty is the version. Correct? What's it do tomorrow?
And then also seventeen dash fourteen is a little different. And then also seventeen dash fourteen is a little different.
Okay, my version seventeen thirteen has A, B, and C and D.
That's the packet version. Okay, yeah, after the packet.
Okay.
Should be one sentence.
Yesterday.
Yes, Johnny's version has all that in it, yes.
Okay, I don't have that. Package date and date didn't have one in itself.
I think we need to go with eleven eighteen twenty version.
And it'll probably have another date soon. It'll probably have another date on it soon.
I'll phone run up and put it over there.
Seventeen fourteen, did you mention that? Because you've got A, B, C, D.
Yes.
It's okay.
A and seventeen fourteen, all the updated versions, eleven eighteen updated version. A is on there and it's, has changed from code dashes, is now B. And A is, and is required that all residents that have Westmore Water Sewer Services shall also have your expletive.
Hearing that, Ms. Kisha, when you agree, if you'll call for it.
Carter?
Yes, with the corrections that goes with that.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Vennel?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
Ladies and gentlemen, I think we have a solid way of sorting this, if you can work with.
I'm sure which version.
No doubt that it will be undergoing some changes and promised revisions, but we're off and running once again. There is a good motion. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is, should be a little simpler, is the second reading of ordinance zero eleven twenty twenty dash one. Second reading of our budget amendment ordinance.
I make the motion to pass on second reading ordinance zero one one two zero two zero dash one.
Second, that motion.
We have a motion by Councilman Leif and a second by Councilwoman Carter to pass a second reading of ordinance zero eleven twenty twenty dash one on the budget amendment. We're open for any discussion. And I will start it off by saying, Ms. Trout, excellent job.
Kisha, you wanna go down and explain?
Okay.
What each of it is?
The first one, transfer the state three days, that's to make up for the paving. And I was going to approve the $6,000 for the salary for City Hall. That's to cover Adam Kelly. And I'm gonna approve the $28,000, that was just what was left over from the hall tax money. And we're just gonna stick it in the reserve account. The $26,000 for the purchase of the police car, and that was also approved. And so then it shows that we were taking the 56, 775 from fund balance and then 63, 300 was the state income tax money that was not budgeted initially.
And on that, $26,000 for the police vehicle, 14 of that, that we authorized up to $40,000 came from the police car.
Right. Okay, good. And I'll let that fund out. All right, and then so the state three days, that's the most of the paving. And then we had only budgeted, I think, around $500 for engineering services. And when they did that paving survey, it came in quite a bit higher than that. So, we needed to put some money in there to cover that. And again, the money's from that coming from general fund. And then underwater sewer, that's the pumping section road line extension. That was budgeted last year, but they get, probably some time, and we carry it forward. So, we're just making that out of fund balance, adding to the budget to cover that paving.
Well, everybody's looking at that, asking questions. Did you receive that email about the release of blame for all field robbers?
Yes, so that was an additional $1,000 on that that we're gonna have to pay out to them.
We need to get that signed and taken care of there. Questions on the budget amendment? This brings you up to date, there's been a lot of changes and money moved in the rainy day fund and Paul Ringco tax and COVID grant, so this gets us all up to date on it. And once again, Ms. Kisha has been working with Mr. Poe and we will be giving some numbers probably in the next month, month and a half for the next council to be looking at for prior budget year. And be starting in January, looking at the twenty one, twenty two budget. So, we'll be off and running once again. Any other comments on the budget amendment? Ms. Kisha, if you'll come up for it.
Carter?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Vennel?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Let for record, we play the motion carries unanimously. We're gonna continue just a little while before we take the break. Some new business that we should be able to knock out pretty quick. We had a resident that came over from Orland Circle that was asking that we put speed bumps on Orland Circle to slow people down. TML suggested, first thing was to lower the speed limit. After lowering the speed limit, then they suggested rental strips. So, we're going to take the process. The chief has stationed officers over there running radar. And everyone, obviously, they see the car sitting there. They drive 15 mile an hour and are perfect citizens. And we would expect nothing less from them. But according to the residents, people do speed through the neighborhood. So, our insurance carrier has said that the first move we need to make is lower the speed limit. So, I'm gonna ask the city council to authorize that to be lowered to 10 mile an hour. If you wanna put a time period on it or if you wanna make it a permanent change, I think that is a good place for us to start. We'll try that for a couple months and see how things are going. And then we'll move forward from that point. So, I'm ready for a motion. Okay, it looks like we're not gonna receive a motion on that, so that dies. So, we will leave that at 15 miles per hour and we'll leave it up to the chief to place to take care of maintaining that area. Next item is the first reading of ordinance number zero eleven twenty twenty dash two to eliminate dumpster pickup. Mr. Vennel has brought that before us. We've discussed it for quite a while now. And I don't know if John gave you any more directions on it, but it seemed like it was good for a first reading for us to detect all of them.
Well, compared to solid ways, this is a very short one. But you should have it in front of you, so I make a motion that we adopt ordinance zero one one two oh two oh dash two on eliminating dumpster pickup.
Has a motion by Councilman Leif? Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? There's Councilman Leif. Any discussion on this ordinance for first reading?
Well, I think we've listened to Aaron with the issues he has. And I think it's appropriate for the protection of our equipment and it'd be more efficient. It's gonna save some money in the long run. And we give a big window here for the businesses to start changing. So, again, I applaud Aaron on putting this together.
I'd like to see in that very first paragraph where it says, has determined that kicking up dumpsters is a danger to the employees. Yes, leave that there. And then put also cost effective too. Or some kind of wording that it's costing us money on the dumping phase and all.
Yeah, should put that in hang, let it be out of fiscus, that's what Aaron thinks it is.
I don't know if that's probably wording somebody else can use. More than if you wanna do that.
And cost effective.
Danger to our employees and our equipment. And it's, does anyone have a better term for cost effective?
Should it be it's not cost effective?
Yes, it should be. Because cost effective is positive.
Right.
Not cost effective and a danger to our employees and our equipment.
There, they changed the lower, they do the second reading.
Any other comments? Ms. Trout?
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Vennel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance zero eleven twenty twenty dash two has been accepted unanimously. The next item is to hire Officer David Hightower as a part-time police officer. Chief?
This is Mr. David Hightower. I wanted to bring him in, let you meet the council. And I'm just asking if he'd be, loaded on to be hired as a part-time officer.
I'll make a motion to hire David Hightower for a part-time police officer. I think we both done this a couple months ago.
Yeah, I think it got left off.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Leif, second by Councilman Vennel to hire David Hightower as a part-time police officer. Any discussion?
What is the rate of pay for him?
For uncertified, I believe it's 15.25 or sixteen, not, he's not uncertified. Sixteen, yeah. I'm sorry, he's a sixteen.
Fifty.
Fifty, okay.
How many part-time officers do we currently have?
We, we had eight, we lost a couple, and he and one other, what would get us back to eight? Mr. Landor put in his residence, two week notice earlier this week.
By having so many, that gives you a guarantee that you will have some available when needed.
Yes, ma'am. There's a couple, like Dwayne Clark, for instance, he's a, he's a flying, he's a pilot for, I'm not sure which hospital, but he's a paramedic, a flight, not pilot. He only works one day a month, maybe two days a month. So, we've got two that work very limited. Still, we've got others that work as many as maybe 20 hours a month or 25.
Anything else? Ms. Kisha?
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Vennel?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Officer Hightower, welcome for this morning.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is to hire Jerry Broach as a part-time police officer. Is Mr. Broach here?
No, sir, he's not here. He's a full-time police officer for Galveston, by GMD, is, he's supposed to be here. He just wants to work through part-time, just probably two or three nights per month. And it's really good for us to have certified, so he will, his pay will be a little different because he is certified. Because we have to have, we can't have a part-time officer uncertified working unless there's a certified officer working.
So, what is his rate tag?
His will be seventeen twenty five.
I'll make that motion to hire Jerry Broach for a time police officer.
Do we have a motion by Councilman Leif, a second by Councilman Vennel to hire Jerry Broach as a part-time police officer at a rate seventeen twenty five? Any discussion? Ms. Kisha?
Brown?
Yes.
Vennel?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Let for record, the motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is increase sergeant wits paid by $1.75 per hour in lieu of having city health insurance. That has me down on it. Do we want to pursue that or does that wanna be deferred or tabled?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we table this issue.
Do we have a motion by Councilman Vennel to table? Do we have a second?
A second.
There is usually no discussion whatsoever on the table.
Could we make it in that motion that it could be a legal?
Well, and that's, that's one I was gonna point out. Did Chief, I was gonna ask Chief, does all of his officers understand why this is happening?
I apologize, I didn't hear the question.
That's okay, we was talking about increasing the pay by the $1.75. And I just wanna make sure all of our officers know why and what is being tabled.
Yes, I would explain it to the two officers that are possibly involved. They understand completely.
Very good. Okay, Ms. Kisha, if you will call for a roll or?
Carter?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Vennel?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously to table. Next item on the agenda is to promote Officer Ray Almiron to captain at a rate of 21.35 per hour. Chief John has brought this to us. They had, Ray and his family is no stranger to us. Chief John and I had a discussion today, but I was telling him that when we set the leadership up of the police department, we set it up with the chief and three sergeants. So, one sergeant became a detective. I don't have any problems whatsoever with him promoting from within and setting his structure. Only a vote of the council can make this happen. So, he is asking for this to take place. Do I hear a motion?
I'm gonna make that motion, Mr. Mayor, to hire or promote Officer Ray to captain. I'm gonna make, I'm gonna set the 21, 25, I think it'll be 20, 25. I don't know if we've ever, I'll be a second, I'll call it on it.
Second.
Say, Councilman Vennel?
Yes.
Okay, we have the second, the Councilman Vennel, go ahead.
I don't really, I can't remember ever promoting somebody to be, no more than at least a dollar a raise. So, we just seriously got two dollar raise here at this town. Well, that was my reason for that.
The only thing that I was bringing up with the chief about the fact with the promotion, we had the three sergeants, of course, we were running three shifts. We have two shifts now. So, we had the two sergeants and the detective, which it was a detective sergeant. So, by him promoting Ray into this position as a captain. So by him promoting Ray into this position as a captain, it increases his authority somewhat, it gives him some lead weight. But what, what I was trying to stress, under the current budget, basically those three are really all you have to work with now, those three positions. And I know he's probably going to have other officers that's wanting to come in and say, now, the captain has moved up, there's a detective position, but I understand from work study that the captain has continued to work as a detective at this point. And so if a detective is appointed or promoted later, that would need to come to the council for approval, so.
Yes, sir, that would be, it is going to be a while before, obviously, forty-one could become a detective, they have to within six months go to a basic CID class. That's actually something that Ray and I are putting together, we're going to try to offer that in twenty twenty-one. Down the road at some point, we hope to have one trained and ready to possibly take that role. We'll look at it then, it could be, the city grows and we might be, have an opportunity by next fiscal year, maybe we are able to hire one more officer and recruit for that position, if not, in the meantime, people will be handling investigations.
Any sign of a situation? Ms. Kisha?
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carter?
We're voting on the twenty twenty-five, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Vennel?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
And I guess I should ask the, if these, if Captain Ray is in approval with that?
Yes.
Motion carries you now.
Captain's charge. His badge of honor should be insane, but just going to make it here in time, hopefully we get a new badge, so. Thanks for coming, Karen.
The next item is to promote Officer Dominic Mancino to sergeant at a rate of nineteen twenty-five per hour.
Do you tell me that? Tell me that came family.
Okay, do I hear a motion to put it on the floor for Dominic Mancino to become promoted to sergeant at a rate of nineteen twenty-five per hour?
I'll make that motion.
And we have a motion by Councilman Lee, a second by Councilman Vennel. Go ahead, Chief.
Dominic has been working the midnight shift, he's been working it for, how long have you been on that shift?
Year and a half.
Year and a half, and we definitely need somebody with some leadership experience, he has that, he has lots of years of service, he's been a supervisor before. And the midnight shift definitely needs a supervisor, because for Ken Witty, gets called all the time, so we need someone to give him a little break, so. He'll be our evening shift supervisor, then Sergeant Witty will be the day shift supervisor.
Any questions? Dominic, have you enjoyed being at Westmoreland in your year at Hightower?
Absolutely.
Very good. He's been a great addition for us.
Well, thank you.
Got a lovely family.
Okay, that would be, Councilman Lee was talking about, did that mean giving anybody a two dollar increase? That would be a two dollar on him.
Yeah, it was my understanding that the nineteen twenty-five was the sergeant's pay, but it's come to my attention there were other things involved in that, so. That's what I asked for, and obviously I'd like to see my guys get paid as much as you all, you know, are able to, and the city is.
Oh, I don't have a problem with that, but just.
No, I'm just saying.
I hope that's a sergeant, by all means.
Yeah. That is currently what the other sergeant is.
Right, as far as like what you're watching.
Your spreadsheet showed that you can handle this without going over budget.
Absolutely.
Ms. Kisha?
Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Vennel?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Motion carries you now.
Sergeant Flora?
Come around, Chief, and get a picture, she wants a picture. Go smile.
Yeah, we're smiling, we're smiling. I got your new badge of honor to be insane, but in the meantime, the old sergeant's badge. Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Y'all want to take a break before we continue? Next item is to allow Amanda Wolf to return to full status as a police officer with a one-year probation period.
I know this is for this.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Wilkerson to defer and a second by Councilman Brown. Well, we'll defer, there is no discussion, so let's get you through call for votes.
Vennel?
No.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
No.
Carter?
No.
Okay, that fails, I vote three to two, that we proceed on?
I'll make a motion, that is an order, I'll make a motion to transfer Amanda Wolf from property management and animal control to a full-time police officer with a one-year probation period.
Do we have a motion by Councilman Vennel? Do we have a second?
I second that, but I'd like to add, Mr. Vennel, if you don't mind, with contingency, that she, her record is expunged.
Yeah, I should have said, yeah, when her record is expunged, which comes at the end of the, yes, add that to it, Kisha, be up here.
So will that be all time once, the record is expunged?
Right, that'll be effective when it's expunged.
And, are we open for discussion?
Yes.
I'm sorry. And I appreciate all the public comments that was made, that we heard tonight, which we can't speak to it at that time, but I appreciate everything everybody said, but I think this is a recommendation from our chief, and is all your officers here in support of?
Yes, ma'am.
This wolf?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that the reason?
The entire department, yes, ma'am, they're completely in support, we're coming back for her.
Okay, I'd like for that to be known also.
Just so I'm clear on the understanding about the record being expunged, that's all we got done, figure, right, she's got to request.
It's already been worked out, it's just, the court date has been set for that to happen, when that happens, that day, she'll get the paperwork right then, it will be expunged.
It's just a formality.
Yes, sir.
But we're voting on an issue that has not been taken care of yet. Am I correct? Is that what the motion is? It's contingent.
Contingent, I think.
Yes.
I do have the question of insurance laws, what is, does this affect anything?
Okay, some of the calls that came in to me were first, we think it's all, some of everyone can understand what I'm saying. Because of the seriousness of what happened in the past, our insurance company, carrier for the city, did litigation costs. And they were asked for a question, if rehire took place, knowing what we have, because the question came up, number one, this has happened before, so there is a pattern of behavior that has been exhibited. Okay, she's gone through several classes, she's done a lot of things, she's been through, you could hit the highlights on what has happened.
Eight-week anger management class.
Okay, anger management.
She was immediately upon her investigation, when it began with the TBI, she was decommissioned by the department as a police officer, she has continued to be, but she did maintain her certification, she was not decertified through the post. The post was contacted to ask if that was an automatic, and they said that it was not, it was up to the department. It was not requested that she be decertified as an officer, so she's kept up her training, and once her record is expunged, like it is for any citizen, it's as if it never happened.
Okay, and that answers some of the questions that P D partners, I asked. One of the things that they were concerned with, with the expungement not already taking place, they wanted to know what the rush was. In other words, Chief John probably answered it best. Miss Wolf will probably not be able to go to any other department and be employed at this point. I don't know if she's checked it for over federal, or got in other offices to see if they would consider her for employment or not, but they wanted to know what the rush was for us to put her back to work, and with this not even taking place yet. And I said, well, as far as I know, she has served all the obligations that she's been asked to take care of, she's done everything to be done, and the chief is supporting it, the police officers are supporting it. Obviously, not everyone did support this, because you've had two officers resign, and that was the reason given to me, for a very reason for leaving, yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make a note of that, I'm not sure what they told you, but I was not given that reason by either one of the officers. Either one of them said they were resigning because of Amanda coming back.
Okay, so, um, let's see, some of the other, say, number one was, why was the rush? Number two, has expungement happened already? It's in progress, is there a reason not to wait another year or two for this to happen? And claims said that they had, basically, and I'm talking to each council member here tonight, and the chief, because that was the names that was called to me. It says that claims have already paid out, and there is no more options for this. If this happens again, then number one, they will look at it and say, there was a lack of training, there was a lack of preparation, a lack of everything that you are as a body of elected officials that are in charge to circumvent this. So they would not be paying out another claim. So if there's another claim made, the claim will come back to the city, probably each council member individually, and the chief. So we'll just have to, I told them that I would pass that on, and.
Was that pertaining to this wolf?
Yes.
Okay. And not other offices?
Because they have already done litigation, and I may not have the correct term of what, you know, tell me, chief, when they take care of it before it goes to trial, to keep it.
Plea deal, or you're talking about a plea, or they settle out of court?
Yeah, right. He gave me a term for it, but I didn't have my pencil with me when I was traveling and couldn't write it down. But they made it very plain, and they're not going to tell you who you can hire and who you can't hire. That is your job by the charter and the policies and procedures, but your name is attached to this, so know what a complication that she's going to owe to you if you pass this tonight, because you're going to be carrying it with you, so. I said, we got those questions, before I move on with anything.
Everybody's acting like it's the first time this situation's ever come before, something, I mean, we've heard situations happen like this several times. Had their records expunged, got hired back, and everything worked out good.
We just promoted one of the captains tonight, that happened too.
I have a list from the post of many offenses that have occurred in the last year, that Officer Bellavia actually found and printed up for me and highlighted there, and this is strictly subjective, it's my opinion that there were many offenses that were created by officers that were brought before post to be decertified, that post, they did not approve them to be decertified. In my opinion, based on my years of experience and having investigated officer-involved uses of force, I don't believe that this particular case was handled exactly as it might should have been. There were some improper procedures that happened, but I don't believe that it rose even to the extent of being criminal in nature whatsoever. And she has been stripped from her police powers for over a year. She remained in this city because this is where she wants to work, and I think that she's been a good employee. And the reason I don't think she would be able to get a job in another city, if the city that she's maintained and worked for over a year after this happened, doesn't see fit to let her have a second chance, I think that other cities would feel the same way, and I believe it would ruin a potentially good officer's career at a young start. She didn't have the three or four months on the road when this happened. I just, I believe she deserves a second chance, and I appreciate the information that you gave her, because I believe she realizes that the entire department, the city, everybody's reputation is on the line for her, and we're willing to do that. But she knows that she's got to be held to a higher standard, and I believe you're going to see that's what she'll do if you allow her the chance.
I am honestly afraid, and this was something that Mr. Altman told me, and I agree upon when he was chief before, is that she will hesitate now. And I wouldn't want to see her hesitate and get herself hurt out there. We'd be just as guilty then as we would be on the, you know, on both sides of the pendulum here. So we've got a decision to make, and is there any other questions that you want to ask, or things that you want to say?
What are we going to do if contingent upon the expulsion, if for some reason the charges are not expunged? And we're, and we've got on the next agenda item tonight to hire another coach, an animal control officer at a rate of nineteen dollars an hour. Where are we going to sit when we pass both of these agenda items?
Well, personally speaking, the first thing that I would say is not pass the second item until the first one is cleared. Also, I feel like very much what you said, if a work study, we're having to tighten a lot of belts and things are being, a lot of jobs are not what jobs were before March the twentieth. So there's a lot of belt tightening, a lot of moving around, a lot of shifting of employees, as you will. So I think that if you put Miss Wolf back into this position, she needs to retain what she's carrying with her for a while until the city gets things squared away about what we want to do with property maintenance and also with animal control. Just because we have a name on an agenda and have a good candidate, there's a lot of things tied to battling also, and when we get to it, I'll be happy to mention it, but it's been asked to be added by a permits person tonight, let's see, how was it, it was building code services. So as we see how we're. So as we see how we're taking on that at the end, we, there may be some changes that we make or don't make. So right now, and we haven't advertised for another person. So if he wants to, if the chief wants to bring his other individual on, he really needs to bring him on as an officer and not as a property maintenance person and a animal control. Because we didn't advertise for that position, number one. And number two, that was a position that was made for Ms. Wolf in order for the council to retain her involvement. And we really need to put that money to use elsewhere in the budget. So. Anything else?
Okay, the motion doesn't state contingent on the expulsion. Can we make sure that this? I asked you to, I asked you to have that moved in.
Yes, okay.
I expect that I'll make a second before I second it.
What pay is Ms. Wolf going to go to if she goes back to this position?
Seven point five dollars.
And chief, would this give you a full-time, I mean, full capacity of officers that were fully appointed?
Based on what I've been told, the department, when I came on, it was my understanding that full capacity would be myself and eight other full-time certified officers. And if she does come on as a full-time officer, that gives us, myself included, nine full-time certified officers.
The city received a grant back about nineteen, early nineteen nineties, which required Chief Danny Piffin at that time. And he hired an officer named Nisi Driver. And that gave six officers plus one. And when that grant ran out, it was like a two, three-year project. And once that grant ran out from that officer, they started to dismiss Ms. Driver, is my understanding. And at that point, the grant official stepped in and said that it was part of the grant that they maintained six officers. So we have to maintain six officers and a chief. And a few years ago, we made it seven and a chief. And then eight and the chief. And then last year, we actually brought it up to nine and a chief. But Ray was unable to hire anyone. And we couldn't fill the position. So we took the money that was there for that position and distributed it back out. And that was kind of how we got the revenue to be able to give the raises last year. If we had maintained the nine plus the chief, we'd been well stocked with people, but we probably could have written them a paycheck. But that's kind of gives you a little bit of history on it and the reason that Westmoreland has the officers that they have was because a grant was obtained somewhat like the safe grant for the fire department. Obviously, once you get into it, then you maintain it. So right now, that is our requirements. We could drop it down if necessary due to budgetary implementations. But I would hope that would never happen. But I know that Chief Jolly is trying to build a good, solid department here. And that's why he has brought all these items on the agenda tonight. So, but this one is a serious issue. I'm going to throw out my two cents work on a couple of things. And normally I don't. But ninety percent of the time, when I call down to the police department, when I call Ms. Wolf or the chief, I get whatever I need almost immediately. A mayor could not ask for better things to happen. But I made a call back in late July. It was somewhat disturbing to me. And I let it pass. It really didn't make any difference. But we had an entire department that went down because of COVID. And my first call was to Ms. Wolf to ask her while she was working, would she be willing to help me on the sanitation truck? And her response was no. I came back up to City Hall, which part of her duties was she was supposed to work at City Hall and Animal Control. So I asked at this point, I said, if I bring Ms. Wolf up here, is there anyone that would be willing to help me ride the sanitation truck to keep this city moving? Ms. Keisha and Ms. Kelly both volunteered to go home and get their clothes, get changed, and they would be back. So with that, sometimes I wonder, was Ms. Wolf the actual team player that we're looking for? It wasn't that, mayor, I've got a lot happening today. I've got a back problem. I've got a hip problem. Obviously, she's a strong young woman and she is available for work. I would just be curious why it was, you know, that I was given an answer like that day. And she may have had plans to go to a birthday party or something like that. And I'm perfectly all right. You can ask anybody in Harvard if they need something. I tried to accommodate it. But that kind of took me back when I felt like we had really bent over backwards as a city to help her. And it was just as nonchalant, no, I can't help today. And, but like I said, there was no additional explanation given. So. The council, this decision is up to you. And it's like I said, you know the pros, you know the cons. You know all about it. So, Ms. Keisha, if you'll call for it.
Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
No.
General?
Yes.
Brown?
Porter?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Wolf has been restored contingent to her record pending expunges. She will be reinstated to seventeen twenty-five an hour. And I congratulate you. Okay, the next item is to hire Tracy Gatwood as a property codes and animal control at a rate of $19 per hour in the plea.
I will make the motion to hire Ms. Gatwood as a police officer. And that the chief of police assign him where he needs to be assigned. If that's animal control, which is property maintenance, that's the night they power.
I'll second that.
What's your motion exactly again?
Hire a police officer.
And a police officer?
Yes. And that Chief Jolly assign him where he needs to be assigned.
So if it's in your spreadsheet, it still stays on your budget, I put him in this position?
Absolutely.
Now you realize that his spreadsheet budget is based on this year's numbers. And those numbers are skewed because we didn't have a chief in the position for several months.
Yes, sir. What I did to figure the numbers was take the budget amount that's remaining and take the officers and the civilian employees, Sedena, at the rate that they would be paid per year at forty. The officer is forty-three hours per week because they don't get overtime until they reach that. The civilian employee, such as Sedena, forty hours per week. And it still falls under by approximately $17,000 of what the remaining budget is for salary.
But what I'm saying is, the reason you have that money is because your position was vacant.
Yes, sir, I understand.
If we'd been paying your position for the, what, six months that it was vacant, that money would have all been gone and you wouldn't have it to use tonight. So that's my point.
That's correct. We have it in the budget to finish out this year. But it would probably take an increase in salary budget for the next fiscal year, that's correct.
Other discussion?
So he would make you, I've heard a lot of numbers though now. So he would make you full staff. You're not overstaffed. You're full staff, which is nine, but...
With him as a police officer, we would actually have ten and include myself, which would in that sense make us one over based on what you all told me that it should be nine. But we wouldn't have a codes, animal control officer. And like, I understand what the mayor was saying. It's pretty much Amanda's expulsion is guaranteed. But if something really crazy were to happen, and it didn't, then there would be a situation where you would have, if she stayed on with that and he remained a police officer, then would be over. If it does work out as it should, he could take her role that she's doing now.
Does all of the animal control expenses come out of the police right now?
Uh, no. It actually, animal control has its own line. If it was set aside before that, because that was part of ten, part of the salary for...
So her salary was split between the two?
Exactly. And I actually thought part of it may still have been coming from City Hall because that's supposed to be that split of the plan, City Hall Police. But I think that because it didn't work out to come without, I think they still kept all of it coming either out of the police department or out of animal control. Which animal control is basically what was placed there to be paying for our county permits and pre-planning for permitting. Right now, that line is just, it's growing and if I can find it right quick.
It's on page five.
I guess, page five, item number one seventy-four. We're a little more than eight thousand or eighty-four hundred dollars in the hole on that one. And on the other, where we're coming, where we're paying Mr.?
Mr. Malice, he comes out of there as well.
Okay. So the county guys have been doing, we've not been doing too bad with them. The permit fees have paid a lot of it. But for the last two months, we have dropped our permit. So only like two permits each month. So we were fortunate that one of those were a big ticket item. And it helped put some of the money back. At our next meeting, that will probably be on the agenda to move that money to let go where it's supposed to be going.
But all of Amanda's salary was coming out of that line sixty-five or that animal control? Okay.
All right, if he was hired as a full-time officer and then Chief Jolly did assign him as property codes slash animal control, could his salary not be taken out of the line item nine sixty-five animal control that's already budgeted there? That Amanda will stop at that point or she'll become police budget?
Actually, what I'm saying is that when the next council meets, one of the things they need to do is to put that money back over to help pay for the codes that is there, not what's being, you know. Right now is that we're just kind of taking it out willy-nilly and we're not putting money back in them. There's nothing in that fund, so. Actually, when you voted to remove her from that position, you were really just taking back what you had previous. So the budget needs to reflect that in your financial statement. Nothing needs to also. Now, with Officer Gatwood, if he does, we're going to talk about codes here in a minute, but I didn't know what was going to be happening if that wasn't on the agenda. So I was going to ask the next council. Obviously, I haven't done anything with this in quite a while. I was going to ask the next council how they want to handle it. If they want to handle a person or if they want to turn this over to the county to do or how we're going to move forward with it. We're going to hit another slow, low period. But I'm going to use this opportunity to tell you, I don't really agree with farming it out. I think it needs to be someone right here in this community. If they don't live in this community, they ought to at least report to this community. And we'll get into that later when we discuss the other. But Chief Jolly has said that Mr. Gatwood wants to, is very interested in being a codes official. So we may be...
Thank you, Inspector.
We may be looking to give horse in the mouth here and just not know how to react to it yet because the bright star is so shining, it's got us blinded, so. But the bottom line is, right now, as far as a tenth officer as such, that is not in the budget. So we'll be doing another budget amendment to make sure we take care of that if the chief doesn't feel like he has enough in his current budget to get him through this year on it. Your other certified officers are making seventeen twenty-five, is that correct?
Sure.
Okay, so what is ready to pay for Mr. Gatwood?
I believe Mr. Lee, Councilman Lee, recommended nineteen. He would not be, he has, he retired from Metro Police Department, so he wouldn't be taking any of the city's health insurance, which would save the city almost eight thousand dollars per year. And he's got a lot of experience and he could potentially be taking on the role of three different things. A certified police officer and also possibly doing the codes and animal control.
Okay. Ms. Keisha, will you read the motion back to me, please?
Motion to hire Mr. Gatwood as a police officer at nineteen dollars per hour and the chief assign him as needed.
Okay, it doesn't state if that's a full-time officer or a part-time officer. So I was going on the assumption it was going to be full-time. So I want to get that cleared up. Do you feel like you have enough in your budget to cover him as of right now?
Yes, sir. I'm positive that the remainder of this fiscal year, I can't speak for 2021 because like you mentioned, a good portion of this year, there were only three or four officers that were even working here because the department had lost several officers and you weren't paying a chief. So, and I realize that. So we'll have to look at it again the new fiscal year. But for the remainder that we have left in the budget under salary and what it's going to take to pay, as has been presented, approximately $17,000 will be left over. But obviously, because of those same situations, the overtime budget is going to go over this year. We're almost to that amount at this time.
I think we've pretty much discussed everything that we need to discuss as far as this part of it goes. My only concern is you have officers making seventeen twenty-five and you're bringing someone in and more than your officers are making now. And that kind of terrifies me because such a, don't get me wrong. And that, uh, that kinda terrifies me, it's such a, uh, don't get me wrong, I'd love to see our officers making that kind of money, but it wasn't, wasn't that long ago we were struggling to get them ten dollars an hour, so...
I understand.
But the council's gonna have to make a decision on it and, uh, you know, the, uh, motion is for a full-time and at nineteen dollars an hour.
Do you think that he would be willing to wait till the next budget year is considered? Or would you lose him?
We'd lose him, and, and I mean, I understand, he, uh, I reached out to him. When I, when he first expressed interest, I explained to him that it was a small city with a small budget and that the city might not be able to pay him what he would like to make. He was hoping to make twenty dollars an hour, and I explained to him that I didn't think that would be possible. What I was thinking of, if he was hired on as an officer at seventeen, twenty-five, if the city paid him half of what they would have to pay for health insurance in lieu of that because he doesn't need it, that's about a dollar seventy-five an hour is how I came up with the nineteen. And he said that he would be willing to, to come, he would be willing to work the nineteen. He's been guaranteed a raise where he's working now, starting January first, at eight hundred dollars per week, which would be slightly more than what he'd make here at nineteen an hour, but he'd like to get back into office.
The, the issue is there is that when you, if, if a job is advertised, if we posted job rates, which we did, correct? Is everybody, is everybody believing me? Is everybody understanding? And that individual who chooses employment, if hired, options out of insurance, that doesn't change my salary, it doesn't change the rate of pay. They, they opt, they opt it out. So, what we're asking is, and, and I know we're comparing a couple of dollars, but the, the issue is, we set a rate for what we hire new officers. And yet now, we're debating the fact that we're gonna change it because they opt out of insurance. Employees opt out of insurance as all the time, their spouse carries their insurance. They, they have tin care, they have other insurances, uh, available to them. The employer doesn't go back and say, hey, I appreciate that, I'm gonna go ahead and increase your pay because you're gonna save us money. That is not the proceed, that's not the procedure, that is not the, the rate of pay that was set in motion by the powers to be, whatever it is, whether it's a Fortune 500 company or whether it's a community, uh, uh, like a municipality. We're, we're asking, um, all the officers who were hired prior to this day to say, hey, you took the insurance, you're, this is your pay. It's set in stone. We can't change it based on the fact that someone doesn't take a benefit. Benefits are what they are, they're a benefit. That's, that's the word. The word means it's extra. You, you, you get that because you, you signed it. So, I don't agree with the fact that we're changing the rate of pay because we decided, because someone opted out of insurance. I don't like that. That doesn't set a precedence for our community, doesn't set a precedence for the way we do business. I don't, I don't agree with it. And furthermore, just, just to add to this, this was the same job, this was the same creation of the job that I, I first introduced when we hired Officer, well, when we, when Amanda Wolf was gonna be retained by the city, when she wasn't no longer, uh, able to be a police officer, I made the motion to, um, have a, a full-time officer to enforce these things. And here we, and here we are, we're doing it, and this is great, but what's, where the narrative changed? It's changed, and I don't, I don't understand why. This is what, exactly what I wanted, but I'm getting it because, I don't know. I, I, that's the problem I've got, is I'm, I'm, you know, I asked for this a year ago. I wanted to include another full-time officer, because that way we enforce codes. Where we have an animal control officer who's trained. I assume there's hours for animal control that officers can get, chief?
Uh, right now, the way it's been since I came on is it's a eight to four job, forty hours a week for the animal control officer.
Yeah. But is there cer, is there further certification for animal control officers that can get or anything like that?
Oh, I'm sure there is, but it's, my knowledge, there's four schools.
I'm sorry?
There's four schools, but it can depend.
So, the point is, this is what I wanted, I wanted this, but it just seems the narrative has changed. Uh, because, uh, because of what happened here tonight. So I, I'm gonna leave that, and I know that, uh, take that with what you, however you wish. But no, I do, I do not like the fact that we're changing the rate of pay because someone's gonna opt out of the benefit.
Well, on that note, Keisha just gave us, uh, or sent us an email today about the legal obligation of it that we can do that.
Uh-huh.
That we can't, yeah, that we pretty much can't do that, uh, increase somebody's pay because they opt out of insurance. So, yeah, uh...
Yes, chief? I was just gonna say, I, I didn't know this part, if that's what you all have that expertise in. I knew it wasn't common practice. I've not seen that, and I agree with what Mr. Brown was saying. I was trying to see if there was a way, I was trying to help our boy, he's the best way I could, and, and see if we could get them a little bit more pay as possible, but I believe that the two-dollar raise you gave was awesome, and they greatly appreciate that. Um, and if Mr. Gatwood can't come for that, the money that the city can offer, that's fine, there, I'm sure there'll be another candidate, so, I understand where, where Mr. Brown, I understand everything he's saying, what you all, and I felt that might be a dilemma, and we talked about it today, so I wasn't sure if it was legal or not.
Yeah, e- even at, at the rate of seventeen, twenty-five, it would basically be another full-time officer for your refunding, and that would, would obviously be boosted into next year. Um, I mean, it's great in thought, but, uh, you, you have a lot of officers that make seventeen, twenty-five, and then there's a lot of city hall staff and public works staff that's right behind it and saying, we want a piece of that pie too. As a matter of fact, here, we're gonna be discussing one here in just a minute, so...
I, I agree with Mr. Brown, Mr., uh, Mr. Gatwood sounds like the perfect candidate for what, the job description, but then I have a problem with our other officers full-time being seventeen, twenty-five and him up to nineteen. Um, so... He would be great.
Right.
Not down from even there, but...
I understand, I was...
I mean, to obligate that money, I would throw an officer council or the other council to come up with the funds for.
You got any other discussion, ma'am?
Well, we rang the, uh, the money back to seventeen, twenty-five and see if he'll be willing to come in here and, and then maybe, what if he takes, starts doing three different roles, increase his pay something like that, with wearing three different hats.
But our issue is still, we're only starting this fiscal year. We may not have this money, since he is an additional officer. Yeah, I agree, we need somebody doing it, and I'm very thankful that you're trying to help your guys. But going into next year, I don't know that he's gonna be there, and that's my worry.
How, um... Let's see what I'm trying to say. Is he, how interested is he in becoming a part-time or a, in building inspector? I heard that mentioned a minute ago, I think, Mr. Mary, you did?
Mr. Jolly said, I didn't understand. Yes, sir, after the last work study, I'll be honest with you, I didn't know. I knew he had some experience in construction, but I didn't know to what extent. So I called him and just asked him, I said, would you at all be interested in something like that? Because I knew you all were gonna discuss potential things down the road. And he said, I'd absolutely be interested, and he sent me back, or I asked him to give me a thing of, uh, his experience, and I sent that to you all. Uh, he's very interested. Um, I don't think he would do like others, and we send him to school and he goes, leaves. Uh, he's sixty years old, he's retired, I mean, he lives in Carthage. I think it'd be something he'd wanna do for the next ten or twelve years, so... But I don't know what it entails as far as, uh, getting the, the training and stuff like that, but I'm sure that he would be very willing to do it.
The training is pretty much that he's got to work on the job with it for one year, and then he can sit for tests unless he meets some prior criteria that, uh, that shapes off time off of it. But, uh, there, there's no doubt for us to get a codes official and then, uh, it's probably gonna cost us more than that.
More, a lot more than nineteen dollars, probably.
But then again...
We're basically paying it out anyway.
Well, right now, we can't pay, uh, we're, we're, we don't have the money to repay what we're paying now, so...
But they would say, now, if that did happen, if we chose to go in the direction of seeking, uh, applications for a building inspector slash codes animal control, and he was interested in it, oh my God, oh! And he still maintained his certification as a police officer, could he still be utilized?
Yes, ma'am, my, one, my thought was just because of his experience in law enforcement, if, even if it's down the road, if he were to come here as a building inspector, codes person, it wouldn't take much at all money-wise or time-wise to go ahead and get his certification as an officer. And I think, as we mentioned at the last, the work study, sometimes when you're out doing these inspections, it's not a bad idea to have that authority to be able to, to have a hand down or whatever. So, I think it'd be a benefit to the city, even if he was hired as a building inspector, to go ahead and get and keep him certified as an officer as well.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
It'd just be an extra benefit.
If he's certified as an officer.
Yeah, he would wanna do that, and we would be able to accommodate that, and it wouldn't really cost any extra money.
Because there's been times when Amanda had to call an officer out because she couldn't do it.
Yes, ma'am.
Is he, he basically already post-certified and everything ready?
He would, he retired in January of, of, uh, 2015, so he would have to go through a transition school of about two weeks at the academy. It hasn't been ten years, but it's been slightly, like, how, by a month, it's been more than five.
All I can say is if y'all wanna try to, try to set it at seventeen, twenty-five and we can let him work it up, and if he's not interested, then he's not interested.
The motion's on for nineteen?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so the motion's at nineteen?
I'll change that to seventeen, twenty-five. If he have any kind of issues with, who are saying...
I second the motion, so change it seven and then...
Okay, so we change the, uh, change it to seventeen, twenty-five and will we extend the au, uh, offer, you know, versus if he's able to meet all the criteria for employment? And, uh, that'll give you the, uh, the next officer. Where, where will you be placing him shift-wise if, if he does accept the offer?
Um, he would work a day shift and be doing the codes and animal control. He would take right over what, what Ms. Wolf's been doing.
Council members, you have a lot to think about.
I, I would like to know where he stands on the possibility of wearing three hats, not just two. If, if, if we were to invest in a ninth, uh, correct, correct, a tenth officer?
If he, if he can.
In your department?
Right.
Which would fully stock you?
Yes, sir.
More than we better probably have?
He's, he's fully stocked right now.
You'd be extra for extra, you'd, you'd fully be...
Right, and it kind of depends on how you look at it, if...
But if he decides to do property management, animal control?
Right, it'd be like, there'd be four officers...
Plus his money is still coming out of the police department, that salary's still coming from there, that's the issue.
Well, the majority of his salary would actually come from the one that's created for codes, there's thirty-two thousand and something.
Yeah.
So with nineteen dollars an hour...
But that thirty-two thousand is moving somewhere else, correct?
Uh, it's...
Needs to cover...
But I don't, but this one says we have eight, eight thousand that we owe back out of it, and how much do we owe, are, are we pretty much breaking even as far as the limits are at this point? I was thinking that you said we're a little bit below on...
I'm not trying to be, I just wanna make sure that if we do this, that we're not gonna run into an issue.
Four dollars will be issued.
A lot of those, we could have had it off before we get there.
But first thing is, we, we need to pay what we already pay. And then, if there's extra, then use it effectively.
Yeah.
But, but as far as his budget for the police department right now, uh, he says he has enough to cover for this year, and of course, the new budget year is coming, and, uh, we'll have to make adjustments to that and, and, you know, it's like the Pope chief. I said, I know you're gonna wanna ask for a couple of new cars and things like that, and some more equipment, and obviously, with, uh, more, more officers comes more uniforms and equipment for him, so, so, so like I said, council has, has a lot to, uh, be thinking about.
So with the president, with Amanda coming back on, if she does, that's put you nine full-time officers plus yourself.
Yes, ma'am.
But really, he needs ten, and so if we're going to ask him to take control of property management and animal control, he needs it as a person.
Okay, I'll tell you, I'll tell you what we're gonna do. We're going to set this one aside for just a few minutes and talk about the, uh, main things, and then come back to it. The one that I placed on there to advertise for a part-time building inspector, I'm gonna hold off on that, uh, until we see what we're gonna do. Uh, if we don't get something resolved tonight, then, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna place it back on there after the first of the year. But, uh, we don't really need a, a part-time person right now if we're discussing a full-time person, so that one's kinda, kinda null and void. So, uh, the advertised for a part-time building inspector, uh, I'm, I'm putting that on hold. Let's discuss the raises for the city hall staff. Uh, we ran out of time at our last meeting. Keisha sent out something, uh, this is exactly what I've been talking about. When we, uh, do things in the middle of the budget year or pass a budget and, and then do it, uh, all of our staff received the same raise, and everyone was happy with that raise. And then our police department decided they didn't like what was being offered. So, the council went back and, uh, uh, gave an additional dollar to all the police department. Uh, they gave, uh, an additional dollar to the public works. Uh, we, uh, moved on that path. Keisha knew how high the budget was, uh, she talked to her staff, and her staff was in agreement with it, with it at that time. But now, it is more and more folks have come forward, but the, uh, the staff at city hall feels like, uh, very in range on over there, and for good reason. Uh, we've always done a great job in trying to keep all of our departments, uh, either doing percentage raises or things like that. Somehow or other, this year, we got out of touch with that. So, Keisha sent out the email to everyone, and I told her I would've been disappointed had she not stepped forward as a leader of that department to ask that, uh, the ladies in that department get this extra, a dollar an hour raise to match what everyone else has got. Uh, we don't have a pay scale, we don't have a system in place. Uh, we've got probably the most educated, uh, city hall staff that we've ever had right now. It's my understanding, and Keisha can help me out on this, that Debbie did turn in her notice for retirement, uh, for later this year now. I told Debbie, I said, I'm just now, or I told Keisha, I said, I've just now got four people in this department. I've got four people in that department for a reason. For more years than I can count on my fingers. on my fingers. We have been, had a finding of internal controls on our annual audit. In two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, the comptroller's office said, we've got to get that under control. So I had to sign a document earlier this year saying that the city of Westmoreland would remit to this, and part of the reason that has always been given in the past is we didn't have enough staff to do this with. So I finally got enough staff, and I've informed Ms. Routh that starting January one, we would implement a full internal controls policy. I want that wiped off of our, our audit in coming year. I don't, we won't get it off in time for this audit to come, and they may slap our hand over it, because, y'all talked to you many times, the legislature has, has decided they are unhappy with this. Another thing's that, and there are other items that, that are coming as of January one, that the comptroller's office is implementing on cities, that we are going to have to start meeting those requirements. So I have actually told her, I said, please beg, beg Debbie not to retire December thirty-first to at least stick around with us part-time. We've got to get everyone trained in the functions of, of, of police citations, the court docket issues and things like that. We've got lots of things going on, but we've got new software, but still being implemented, lots of things that are happening, and, and now trash cans on top of that, so we just keep, it, it's like we just keep throwing stuff at city hall and saying, here it comes, y'all, y'all just take care of it. And in the meantime, you've got people coming in, open records requests and different things, so, I can't imagine the open records request are going to come in in the next two or three days over actions taken here tonight, so we'll just deal with them, do our best, and Ms. Keisha, I'm, I'm available, if you need me for anything, and I'm just kind of sitting around trying to stay out of, out of your way, and I commend her on doing the, the best job that she can do with what she has to do with. But I, I encourage you to ask someone to make a motion and to pass that to bring the city hall staff up to, to what you gave everyone else.
How much motion would we bring to the hall their pay up to equal, to make it fair?
Only one dollar now, right? I'll second. Who's that? Okay, we have both motion, counsel Morgan, Wilson, and second by councilman Vennel, to bring the city hall staff up to what the other folks received back in July. I'm not going to ask that it be retroactive, we'll, we'll take it from this date, or from the next payday forward, so, any questions?
What does that make it, what does that raise equal to, about a dollar?
One dollar.
One dollar.
Then your budget can handle that?
No. And that's what I said, we're already going to be over six thousand from hiring Kelly, and then.
Well, we took care of that.
We took care of that, right, yeah. Um, so if Debbie goes part-time, and I talked to her, her part-time at first was, you call me when you need me to come in, if somebody's sick, if I'm on vacation, whatever. When I talked to her about, you know, needing her for internal control, she said, you just let me know, you want me to work two days a week, you want me to work three days a week, what do you want? She said, just tell me what you want, and I'll show up. So I calculated it at three days a week, and that's going to put us an extra three thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighty-six cents over budget.
If we don't give the raise, but if we give the raise, it'd be nine thousand three ninety-nine.
Well, we're at six thousand of that is from, is already taken care of with budget.
Oh, okay, so, okay, okay.
That's already three thousand.
Well, you still got twenty-eight thousand left from your state income tax. So we took thirty-four hundred dollars more from that, and you still want to have roughly twenty-five thousand left.
Correct.
Right. Okay, so the nine thousand three ninety-nine had the six thousand in that, okay, okay, okay.
Couple of questions.
Ms. Keisha, do you call for a roll?
Brown?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Walkerson?
Yes.
Motion, KJ Anderson, congratulating everyone at city hall.
I would be happy. Thank you all.
Okay, next item is three seven one eight six smiles, Mr. Lee?
They, they, they applied for a permit, I think. They applied for a permit.
Yes, and I'm sorry, I didn't bring everybody.
And, and, everybody knows that group, that, that great container, and on the day of Christmas parade, they want to occupy this area, area down here in front of the veterans park, just that one part like that, and with that, some food trucks and house vendors, and for that day. And she tells, told me that they're getting the insurance policy in place tomorrow, and I told her that this motion would be contingent upon, city hall has a copy of that insurance, they're getting a million-dollar extra policy.
Okay, she, she did put in a, she didn't ask to close any streets or anything, so it's just, just that area right there, and I sent her to the veterans, and the veterans, okay, I didn't know if they were going to do the insurance for it or.
Now, she would have bought the insurance, or the group did, would have bought the insurance, that will cover any other kind of event that they might have for, for years.
Okay, so is this a motion to approve?
Providing, yes, providing that city hall has a copy of that insurance policy by day's end tomorrow.
I'll second that. Have a motion by councilman Lee, and second by councilman Vennel, to approve, approve three seven one eight six smiles for the area in front of veterans park for, what is it, December fifth?
Yes.
For a little event. Contingent upon their policy rider getting into city hall, which that's contingent upon everybody, that's the requirement. Any discussion? Okay, do you call for a, Ms. Keisha?
Al?
Yes.
Walkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Building code services, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I just want to get this in front of the council, so I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the building and code service that the, Mr. Wright offered to us, and I don't have more to say than to second.
There.
And, uh, motion by councilman Vennel, and second by councilman Lee. Go right ahead, Mr. Brown.
Okay, when we brought this up, this is back last January, actually, since Mr. Mills is an expert, I sent him the proposal, which was two options from the county, and option two was totally out of question, but option one would meet a lot of our needs, if not all. So I sent that proposal to Steve Mills in February, and I said, you know, here's the agreement that they've offered to us, and basically, what, what do you think about it? And I would read the whole letter, of course, but he says, in summary, it looks like a good deal to me, make sure that the city in the future wants to bring the service back in-house, you'd be able to. If you have any, any other questions, let me know. Now, I've heard a number thrown around that we're paying, Mr. Mills already paid him how much, eleven thousand dollars?
Yes, I mean, that's not for like the fiscal year, that's for the calendar back to January.
Right, yeah.
Where's that on?
If it seemed to me to, to get this worked out, you know, I don't know what we're going to hire to do the, where this police officer may come and want to do that, but I think we can save some money by going ahead and adopting this proposal from Mr. Wright. They need to tweak it a little bit, but I think it would, I think it would meet our needs right now.
Okay, let's tweak the proposal from Mr. Wright, if you have your copy of it by any chance. Item three D is one that I think should be stricken from, it says, in the event that a fee payment is not made on a parcel in the city, the county will be assisted by the city in collecting the same. I think that should be left totally up to them, and we, we should not have a, have anything in that.
I don't know that I represent, all I have is the letter, was there a proposal?
This was, this was a contract from Mr., Mr. Wright that was sent out.
It has two options on it?
No, that's just, that's not a contract, that's just a communications already is.
It's what?
This thing I have is just a.
It, it says contract on the top of it.
Well, see, I don't, I don't understand.
And.
What I'm looking at, it says proposal.
Okay. What you have is old, he sent a contract that you should.
Well, isn't anybody on seeing a contract? I never seen one.
I thought there was.
It was like months ago.
Yeah, I thought there was a contract.
Yeah, I looked for it.
And I thought we entered into a contract.
No, we, we didn't enter the contract because I didn't like the wording on it, and the council never brought it back up. So if you want to pass the contract with them and leave me in charge of taking out the things that I don't agree with from the city, I'm perfectly open to that, and we'll get this moved, and then that settles everything else. I will say, I am totally against us farming out our permitting and, and everything outside of the city. We've lost our communication system, we have no control over it whatsoever now, and whatever the county says you do, then we have to do. We don't have any control over any of that anymore. We can ask, and we can request, this contract says in it, it was something that, that caught my mind only about the, the city. Basically, you don't have any say-so into it after you turn it over to them, they will make sure that they do all the permitting, the fees.
The reviews of the permit, like Mr. Mills is doing?
It says county research rights charge an additional seventy-five dollars inspection fee whenever it is not accessible, still not what I was looking for. The county will make all decisions as to the hiring, employment, payment, disband dismissal, any staff, as for the county, as well as the timeline of the matters that will be handled. The county is very professional, one thing that is, is, they don't really cover in this that is something, the county is going to start doing the electrical inspections, and they would like very much to pull this in with, with their inspections there also, but it, it doesn't say it at this point that that's part of our contract. But I haven't heard anything from Steve as to how that's progressed as far as meetings with the county, I went to a couple meetings out there about it, and that was it. It was, it got turned over to legal. So, you know, my problem with it is, if we don't have a person inside this city that is monitoring this city and keeping up with things, how many buildings are, have a porch built onto it, a deck built onto it, a storage building pulled in, a storage building pulled in that violates the planning and zoning rules? You're, you're just losing all of that. Swimming pool permit, maybe, doesn't sound like much, twenty, thirty, forty dollars, ten-by-ten building or a twenty-by-ten building over here, forty dollars, a carport addition over here, somebody just decides they're going to take it on, forty bucks. It's not too long that you have neighbors that are calling you wanting to say, what's going on here? I thought we had a city that had things under control, and, and you're not doing anything about this. You, you talk about property maintenance and codes, property maintenance is basically what Amanda has been taking care of. She has not been taking care of codes, building permitting, she's been getting a lot of questions because of the title codes, but our police force has been the ones that's actually been getting things cleaned up here, as you know, just down by IGA, things are cleaned up. Officer Ralph Montana went down and sighted the gentleman, and he's going to turn it over to the courts and let the courts handle it. We, we have done and not done enough to create three turmoils in, in the last four years because of codes and permits and, and property maintenance. So we're, we're on a good move, you, you passed some good ordinances tonight, we're making things come together, but honestly, I don't feel, you voted so long on this, I feel like your new council should be one that, that takes this up, and if you want to review the contract, it's right here, you're welcome to look at it.
I'll just withdraw my motion, I just want to have a little discussion on it, I think we should have moved on it months ago, but that, that didn't happen, so I just, I'll remove my.
And I would like to comment, the police department is doing a good job, but Ray was down there to call Amanda, who did not cite anything, she's been working on that for a long time, that's the reason Ray's real citation, don't make a cookie.
Like I said, this young car's been sitting up here for probably a year and a half, so.
I agree.
You know, I think we're starting to get some teeth in this.
So what you're saying, your recommendation would be to bring it all back in-house to get a building inspector slash code slash animal control, all in one person?
No, you, that's what happened with Tim, you voted him down with too much.
But what are you asking?
You need a codes person, you need a permitting person, you need a planning and zoning person that handles that. That is enough of a job for anybody. Animal control needs to be totally separate, and you need to send a person to school for animal control that knows what the rules, regulations, and laws are governing this jurisdiction about animal control. I mean, Amanda said it every night, you get into TWRA, wildlife resources, obviously, you get into the animal rights organizations and things like that, there is a, there is a lot to that. And this council has been notorious for overloading people and giving them more jobs than what they can do, and then they end up leaving a good job, packing up and going somewhere else. And it, it's time that we put our hats on and do our job and, and make things happen for this city that needs to happen. So now, we're back to Tracy Gatwood.
We have a motion on the floor, if I'm not right.
That is correct. Ms. Keisha, if you'll read that motion one more time.
Okay, motion to hire Gatwood as a full-time police officer at seventeen twenty-five an hour, and the chief assign him as needed.
We still in discussion?
Are we still in discussion?
Yes.
Okay. So we said a lot tonight about three different jobs. And, you know, animal control has always, a lot of jurisdictions have fell under the police department. And property codes and building inspectors seem to fall under one separate type title or one person where it's had of those two individuals. So I am in favor of taking a step back and reevaluating what we really need for the city because I don't think we're at a position to hire another individual without we truly knowing what we need as a city. I think what we need is data. I'd like to know how much animal control, which I have that, but I want to look at it further. Animal control and property codes that Amanda is doing in a one-month, three-month, and a six-month timeline. Because that will give us a breakdown of the average of how long this individual, or Amanda, was doing that particular job. And then look at the same data for a part-time building inspector, or excuse me, a building inspector, how much is, who is actually getting, meaning to get the, was it permits and what else, what other permit zone is?
Pre-planning.
Huh?
Pre-planning.
Pre-planning. And then also, I thought this, that individual also needs to be a part of the planning and zoning board. And so look at that data and realize how we can be most cost-effective with what we need. I don't think we're there yet. And so I think anything we do right tonight is going to be premature. Hiring someone, we're not ready because we don't have the data and we haven't studied it, which we need to do in a work session in the future. I'm in favor of waiting and tailoring this. I know the motion's on the floor to hire, I think we just need to vote about it and go forward. Maybe say it a lot for nothing.
Okay, any other comments?
I just think there's just too much up in the air to make a decision on this tonight. I know I can't, with me going off the board, I can't because nothing's in concrete on it. We would be in need of code slash building inspector. I don't know.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to hire Tracy Gatwood as a full-time police officer to entry to the chief's discretion and he'd be full-time, he's shifted 1725 per hour.
Question?
My last call, okay? If you'll call the room, please.
Bill?
No.
Brown?
No.
Carter?
No.
Lee?
I'll have to vote yes or no, I already voted.
Burson?
No.
401, yes, the motion fails. Let that person know that if he's still unarrested, we may have some screwing up. It just, the timing just was not right. Thank him for being willing to come and be with us.
He sounds like a perfect candidate for watching this.
And he may be the person that wrote this.
Yeah, yeah. But I think more discussion than he thought it.
Have I missed anything else on this?
Now, we didn't say the installation of new council members.
New council members will be sworn in on December 1st here at City Hall at 10:00.
City Hall or the...
Probably here in this room.
It's Tuesday.
It's Tuesday, actually, the first.
If Councilman Vennel and Vice Mayor Carter will meet here at the center of the room.
Can I take pictures?
Dedicated years of your life to this city and I would like to take this opportunity to say thank you for your hard work and dedication. Don't forget for so long time to make a great payment, but the city is a better city for us and we're going to continue to move forward and things are going to happen. So congratulations to the whole of you and thank you for your service.
Can I say one?
Certainly. It's been a privilege to serve as a City Councilperson. I appreciate the confidence that people put in me four years ago. And I'm, I'm going to say all the things we've done, but I'm proud of our accomplishments. And I look in this room here, I'm proud of who I am, but when somebody comes in, we're proud now. So I encourage the new council, you, of course, probably have been there before, but I want you to do good. If I can ever help in any way, let me know. I'm not going anywhere. If I can help anywhere, except being a City Council, I'm willing to work.
And I echo those comments. It's been a privilege to serve on the council for the last four years and to serve the city as recorder for eight years, giving me a total of 12. But I too am not, our lives are not over. So I'm willing to help out in any way possible with any of the departments within the city. Just because I'm not sitting up there doesn't mean I'm going anywhere or vanishing.
I'm not sure I want to ride the trash truck, though. I'm a little older than you are. I may have to draw.
You might have got the same answer as you got from Amanda if you'd asked me.
Who's the photographer?
I'll do it.
I'm smiling.